So, welcome everyone to the special council meeting of June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one to approve the budget. And in the interest of the government transparency with regards to deliberation and decisions made by the city council, and according to open meeting law, since this meeting was posted as a Zoom meeting, this meeting is being recorded by video and audio, and will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the city council during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote. So if you're calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. And if you are watching on a computer or device, there is a raise hand button that you can tap or press to respect, to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. And before we get started, I'm going to announce the counselors that are in attendance and then go through the administration. I'm going to start off from my top left, the way it goes, and as myself, Councilor LeBlanc. We have Counselor Pep, we have Counselor McCarthy, we have Counselor Cox, Counselor Holmgren, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor Nolan, and Counselor O'Hara. Also in attendance this evening, we have our Mayor, Mayor Taken. We have our Acting C A O Frank Cousins. We have our Assistant to the C A O Christopher Sicaranza. We have our CFO John Dunn, our City Clerk Joanne Sinos, our City Auditor Kenny Costa, and I think that's it for the meeting up on the panel.
Do you, I think, I think you announced John twice, but you skipped me.
Oh, I'm sorry, and we have Counselor Memhard. I just got, always a pleasure to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You left off Kenny Costa.
I said Kenny. Okay, so Madam Clerk, can we have the first order of business, please?
First order of business is the approval of the F Y twenty-two budget review meeting minutes of the meeting of six, nine, twenty-one, and six, fourteen, twenty-one.
Thank you, and Kenny, would you like to say anything before we turn it over to the Chair of B N F, Counselor Cox?
No, I think we're, we're good to go. I believe Melissa is, she's good to go.
All right, perfect, I'll hand it over to Budget and Finance Chair, Counselor Cox.
You need a motion to approve the minutes first.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
It's moved. Second.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Nolan, seconded by Counselor Memhard and O'Hara. All right, and Counsel Memhard, you have roll call this evening, Counsel Memhard.
Yes, and the dog says yes.
Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara.
Yes.
Counselor Pat.
I do yes, but when you vote, you can only vote once, not for the other, for the one that's got all that big head of hair.
Counselor Cox.
Yes.
Counselor Gilman. Nope, we don't have Counselor Gilman this evening. Counsel Holmgren.
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc, yes, and Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Our motion passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one absent. All right, Madam Clerk, we'll we'll hand it over to Budget and Finance Chair, Counselor Cox.
Joanne, can you email Val the invite, please? Thank you. All right. I am pleased to present the recommendations of the Budget and Finance Committee for the city's budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, which begins on July first, two thousand and twenty-one. Overall spending in the general fund amount to one hundred and twenty million, one thirty-two, seven thirty-three, of which forty-five million, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven is set aside for our schools. We are in a city of some thirty thousand people, covering forty-two square miles with sixty miles of coastline. Between all city services and departments rely, we rely on fourteen hundred skilled municipal employees based to keep our city running smoothly. We extend our appreciation for the professional work done by the administration, in particular interim C A O Frank Cousins, CFO Treasurer John Dunn, Assistant to the C A O Chris, Christopher Sicaranza, Financial Analyst Grace McCann, and our school committee and school management team. This council appreciates our own staff's hard work in this process. City Auditor Kenny Costa, City Clerk Joanne Sinos, Assistant City Clerk Grace Poirier. I'm going to mess that up, did I mess it up? Joanne? I can't hear you.
No, you got it.
It's Poirier.
Poirier, I do that every year. And Sherry Carvallis, Clerk of Committees. All city department heads carefully explained and defended their appropriation request, first to the administration and then to Budget and Finance Committee. Line by line, dollar by dollar, it is carefully, deliberately processed, making efforts at every step to be open, public, and accessible, respecting the needs of the city, and hard-earned financial support provided by our city's taxpayers. Our steward, our fiscal stewardship means that our independent auditors in Massachusetts Department of Revenue, positive review and acceptance will result.
Progress.
The Budget and Finance Committee appreciates that this has been a very tough budget year for the mayor's office spring into balance due in part to COVID-nineteen uncertainty of the economy and the significant debt service that remains. As reviewed and tightened by interim C A O Frank Cousins, CFO John Dunn, and the department heads and the mayor's team, this budget within constraints of our contractual obligations is already lean and mean. Just a few procedural matters I'd like to touch on. All motions to be put forward were voted by the members of Budget and Finance Committee, Counselor Scott Memhard, who is the Vice Chair, Counselor John McCarthy, and myself. For each department, the amount of personal services, ordinary maintenance, capital outlay, and any special transfers will be specified in a single motion as read by myself, with the exception of one department, the school department. Each line item will be considered to have been separately voted otherwise. I will motion the vote, Vice Chair of Budget and Finance, Counselor Scott Memhard will second for the record unless he has recused himself for a particular vote. And upon the council's roll call vote, I will announce the results of each vote. All motions will require a roll, roll call vote due to the remote meeting. Are you ready to start making motions?
Yeah, but before we start, Melissa, Counselor Gilman has joined us, and also the Chairman of the School Committee, Jonathan Pope, is in attendance also. And then I'd like to let everybody know that under two sixty-eight A, if there are any any announcements that you need to do, we should have them. I mean, we could probably do them now, or we could probably do them during the line item.
We usually do it during the line item.
Okay, yeah, so when it comes to the school, I know my wife's on the school, and yeah, so we'll just go, when that line item comes, just to announce that you have, if you have a a conflict and explain what it is and how you're going to vote, so.
Okay.
Ready to rock and roll whenever you are, Counselor.
I'm talking. All right.
Melissa, do you want me to call the roll call after each line item, or will you?
Actually, if you can call the roll, that'd be great.
Yep, I got it, so we'll do the, we'll do the, the motion, we'll do the
The second.
And I'll, and I'll take it over from there, okay, perfect.
That would be fabulous, thank you.
I got it.
All right, these motions have been paired by, by the Chair of Budget and Finance and reviewed by the city auditor for the sole use of members of the city council standing committee Budget and Finance. The motions that I'm putting forward first are the General Fund Free Cash and Enterprise Fund Retain Earnings Motion Reserve for the F Y twenty-two budget. Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council appropriate an amount of four hundred thousand from the General Fund Undesignated Fund Balance Free Cash to the General Fund Fund Balance Reserve for Special Purposes. The purpose of this appropriation from the General Fund Undesignated Fund Balance Free Cash is to reduce the fiscal year twenty-two tax levy, and I so move.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Counselor Cox, seconded by Counsel Memhard, any discussion, Counselor?
No.
All right, roll call vote, and I just want everybody to know that is in attendance, we don't have many, but we did do the public hearing last week, so this is the motion part of it to approve it. So Counsel Memhard.
Yes.
Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel Pat.
Yes.
Counselor Cox.
Yes.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren.
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc, yes, and Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes on a roll call vote of nine in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, I had to turn my fan on because it's wicked hot in my office upstairs, so if anybody has a problem hearing me, please let me know on this next motion.
You're fine.
F Y twenty-one Sewer Enterprise Fund Retain Earnings Appropriation related to the F Y twenty-two budget. Budget and Finance voted unanimously to appropriate in the amount of two hundred thousand from the Sewer Enterprise Fund Undesignated Fund Balance retained earnings to Sewer Enterprise Fund Fund Balance Reserve for Special Purposes. The purpose of this appropriation from the Sewer Enterprise retain earnings is to reduce the sewer user charges rate for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made, any discussion?
No.
All right, Counsel Memhard.
Yes.
Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel Pat.
Yes.
Counselor Cox.
Yes.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren.
Yes.
Counsel LeBlanc, yes, and Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes on a roll call, nine in favor, zero opposed.
The following motions are going to be for the F Y twenty-two General Fund Budget by department. Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve the F Y twenty-two appropriations for the city council as follows. Personal Services, one hundred and three thousand, five hundred, ordinary maintenance, twenty-nine thousand, five hundred, for a total of one hundred and thirty-three thousand, and I so move.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion?
I doubt there'll be any discussion on, is from my point, but if you're just doing a general, then.
Yeah, typically after a motion, we usually offer discussion for any counselor, so I'm just standard procedure, so I'll be repetitive. Counsel Memhard.
Yes.
Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel Pat.
Yes.
Counselor Cox.
Yes.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren.
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc, yes, and Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve the F Y twenty-two appropriations for the executive city mayor as follows. Personal Services, three hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty, ordinary maintenance, seventy-four thousand, five hundred, for a total of four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty, and I so move.
Second.
All right, motion's been made, moved and seconded, any discussion? All right, Counsel Memhard.
Yes.
Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel Pat.
Yes.
Counselor Cox.
Yes.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren.
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc, yes, and Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and Finance recommend the city council approve the F Y twenty-two appropriations for the city auditor as follows. Personal Services, three hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight seventy-two, ordinary maintenance, fifty thousand, three seventy-seven, for a total of four hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and forty-nine, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, Counsel, any counsel discussion? Saying none, Counsel Memhard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel Pat.
Yes.
Counselor Cox.
Yes.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren.
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc, yes, and Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council, that the city council approve the F Y twenty-two appropriations for purchasing as follows. Personal Services, one hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight eighty, ordinary maintenance, one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, sixty, for a total of three hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Saying none, Counselor Memhard.
Yes.
Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel Pat.
Yes.
Counselor Cox.
Yes.
Counselor Gilman. Counsel Holmgren.
Yes.
Counsel LeBlanc, yes, Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council, that the city council approve the F Y twenty-two appropriations for Assessor as follows. Personal Services, four hundred and forty-nine thousand, six seventy, ordinary maintenance, fifty-four thousand, four ninety, for a total of five hundred and four thousand, one sixty, and I so move.
Second.
All right, and moved and seconded, any discussion? All right, Counsel Memhard.
Yes.
Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel Pat.
Yes.
Counselor Cox.
Yes.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counselor Holmgren.
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc, yes, and Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve the F Y twenty-two appropriations for the treasure collector as follows. Personal Services, six hundred and eighty thousand, five fifty-one, ordinary maintenance, two hundred and seventeen thousand, three seventy-five, debt service, forty-four thousand, two twenty-five, for a total of nine hundred and forty-two thousand, one fifty-one, and I so move.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All right, Counsel Memhard.
Yes.
Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel Pat.
Yes.
Counselor Cox.
Yes.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren. All right, Jen may be froze, Counsel LeBlanc, yes, Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one technical difficulty.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve the F Y twenty-two appropriations for law as follows. Personal Services, two hundred and eighty-one thousand, three ninety-five, ordinary maintenance, ninety thousand, for a total of three seventy-one, three ninety-five, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. We may have lost Jen, all right, any discussion? All right, saying none, Counsel Memhard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel Pat.
Yes.
Counselor Cox.
Yes.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
It looks like we lost Counsel Holmgren, she's.
She's still adding back in.
Counsel LeBlanc, yes, Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes on a roll call vote.
Counsel Holmgren's back.
She missed the motion, though.
I'm sorry, I would have.
Yeah, usually if she was here for the motion, I'd let her vote, but she wasn't here for the motion, so that's just our rules of procedure. Motion passes, eight in favor, one technical difficulty. So Jen's back, you all set, Jen? All right, good, thank you.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve the F Y twenty-two appropriation for personal human resources as follows. Personal Services, three hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and four, ordinary maintenance, fifty-seven thousand, two eighty-one, for a total of three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, nine eighty-five, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All right, Counsel Memhard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel Pat.
Yes.
Counselor Cox.
Yes.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren.
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc, yes, Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes on a roll call, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve the F Y twenty-two appropriations for Management Information System as follows. Personal Services, three hundred and fifty-six thousand, five seventy-four, ordinary maintenance, six ninety, six hundred and ninety-seven thousand, twenty-nine, capital outlay, forty thousand, for a total of one million, ninety-three thousand, six hundred and three, and I so move.
Seconded.
All right, moved and seconded, any discussion? Saying none, Counsel Memhard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel Pat.
Yes.
Counselor Cox.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman.
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren.
Yes.
Counsel LeBlanc, yes, Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve the F Y twenty-two appropriations for city clerk as follows. Personal Services, two hundred and ninety-five thousand, five hundred and five, ordinary maintenance, six thousand, two forty-five, for a total of three hundred and one thousand, seven hundred and fifty, and I so move.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded, any discussion? All right, Counsel Memhard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel Pat.
Yes.
Counselor Cox.
Yes.
Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren.
Yes.
Counsel LeBlanc, yes, Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and Finance recommended, unanimously recommended that the city council approve the F Y twenty-two appropriation for registration as follows. Personal Services, sixty-nine thousand, one forty-seven, ordinary maintenance, sixty-eight thousand, eight seventy-five, for a total of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, twenty-two, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Counsel Memhard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel Pat.
Yes.
Counsel Cox.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman.
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren.
Yes.
Counsel LeBlanc, yes, Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve the F Y twenty-two appropriations for Conservation Commission as follows. Personal Services, ninety-one thousand, nine seventy-four, ordinary maintenance, fifteen thousand, for a total of one hundred and six thousand, nine seventy-four, and I so move.
Second.
The movement seconded, any discussion? Counsel Memhard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel Pat.
Yes.
Counselor Cox.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman.
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren.
Yes.
Counsel LeBlanc, yes, Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve the F Y twenty-two appropriation for community development as follows. Personal Services, five hundred and fifty thousand, six thirty-nine, ordinary maintenance, eighty-six thousand, two seventy-five, for a total of six hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine fourteen, and I so move.
Second.
All right, so we've moved and seconded, any discussion? Saying none, Counsel Memhard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel Pat.
Yes.
Counselor Cox.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman.
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren.
Yes.
Counsel LeBlanc, yes, Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve the F Y twenty-two appropriations for police administration as follows. Personal Services, five hundred and eighty-four thousand, one oh nine, ordinary maintenance, fifty-nine thousand, eight sixty-three, for a total of six hundred and forty-three thousand, nine seventy-two, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All right, Counsel Memhard.
Yes.
Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel Pat.
Yes.
Counselor Cox.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman.
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren.
Yes.
Counsel LeBlanc, yes, Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve the F Y twenty-two appropriations for police uniform as follows. Personal Services, five million, six hundred and sixty-four thousand, twenty-nine, ordinary maintenance, one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two sixty-seven, capital outlay, one hundred and ten thousand, five fifty-two, for a total of five million, nine hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight forty-eight, and I so move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? So if anybody does want a discussion, raise your hand, so I know, so that way we can go over it, I just wanted a procedural thing. Counsel Memhard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Absolutely, yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel Pat.
Yes.
Counselor Cox.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman.
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren.
Yes.
Counsel LeBlanc, yes, and Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve the F Y twenty-two appropriations for police criminal investigation as follows. Personal Services, five hundred and three thousand, one twenty-eight, ordinary maintenance, two thousand, four hundred and fifty, for a total of five hundred and five thousand, five seventy-eight, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All right, Counsel Memhard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel Pat.
Yes.
Counselor Cox.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman.
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren.
Yes.
Counsel LeBlanc, yes, Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve the F Y twenty-two appropriations for police harbor as follows. Personal Services, thirty-one thousand, seven twenty-two, ordinary maintenance, thirteen thousand, for a total of forty-four thousand, seven twenty-two, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Counsel Memhard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel Pat.
Yes.
Counsel Cox.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman.
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren.
Yes.
Counsel LeBlanc, yes, Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve the F Y twenty-two appropriations for police parking as follows. Personal Services, one hundred and thirty-six thousand, three oh one, ordinary maintenance, four hundred dollars, for a total of one hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and one, and I so move.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded, any discussion? All right, Counsel Memhard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel Pat.
Yes.
Counsel Cox.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman.
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren.
Yes.
Counsel LeBlanc, yes, Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve the F Y twenty-two appropriation for fire prevention and suppression as follows. Personal Services, nine million, two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine eighty-three, ordinary maintenance, seven hundred and forty-eight thousand, seventy dollars, capital outlay, one hundred and nine thousand, four thirty-five, for a total of ten million, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four eighty-eight, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Counsel Memhard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel Pat.
Yes.
Counselor Cox.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman.
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren.
Yes.
Counsel LeBlanc, yes, Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve the F Y twenty-two appropriation for inspectional services as follows. Personal Services, five hundred and seventy-one thousand, three forty-eight, ordinary maintenance, fifteen thousand, six hundred, capital outlay, four thousand, for a total of five hundred and ninety thousand, nine forty-eight, and I so move.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded, any discussion? All right, Counsel Memhard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel Pat.
Yes.
Counsel Cox.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman.
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren.
Yes.
Counsel LeBlanc, yes, and Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve the F Y twenty-two appropriations for fire emergency management as follows. Ordinary Maintenance, fifty thousand, two sixty-two, capital outlay, two thousand, five hundred, for a total of fifty-two thousand, seven sixty-two, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Counsel Memhard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel Pat.
Yes.
Counselor Cox.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman.
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren.
Yes.
Counsel LeBlanc, yes, Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes on a roll call, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve the F Y twenty-two appropriations for police animal control as follows. Personal Services, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine fifty-three, ordinary maintenance, eight thousand, for a total of one hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine fifty-three, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All right, Counsel Memhard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel Pat.
Yes.
Counsel Cox.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman.
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren.[1790.10]
Yes.
Council LaBlanc, yes. Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve the FY twenty-two appropriations for shellfish control as follows. Personal services, one hundred and sixteen thousand nine ninety-one. Ordinary maintenance, nine thousand fifty dollars, for a total of one hundred and twenty-six thousand forty-one dollars, and I so moved.
Second.
Moving in second and any discussion? All right, Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LaBlanc, yes. Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve the FY twenty-two appropriations for DPW solid waste disposal and recycling as follows. Personal services, twenty thousand. Ordinary maintenance, two million three hundred and fifty thousand one seventeen, for a total of two million three hundred and seventy thousand one seventeen, and I so moved.
Second.
Moving second and any discussion? Seeing none, Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LaBlanc, yes. Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve the FY twenty-two appropriations for DPW engineering as follows. Personal services, fifty-four thousand eight ninety-eight. Ordinary maintenance, nine thousand two hundred and forty-seven, for a total of sixty-four thousand one forty-five, and I so moved.
Second.
Moving seconded, any discussion? Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LaBlanc, yes. Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes, uh, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve the FY twenty-two appropriations for DPW public works administration as follows. Personal services, one hundred and eighteen thousand ninety-three. Ordinary maintenance, fifteen thousand seven hundred and ninety, for a total of one hundred and thirty-three thousand eight eighty-three, and I so moved.
Second.
Moving seconded, any discussion? Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Council LaBlanc, yes. Sorry, that's that one up, but we all got it. Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve the FY twenty-two appropriations for DPW snow and ice removal as follows. Personal services, one hundred and forty-one thousand five hundred. Ordinary maintenance, five hundred and ninety thousand one hundred. Capital outlay, thirty-five thousand, for a total of seven hundred and sixty-six thousand six hundred, and I so moved.
If it's enough, second.
Probably not. Uh, moving in second and any discussion? All right, Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LaBlanc, yes, and Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve the FY twenty-two appropriations for DPW public services follows. Personal services, one million five hundred and ninety-nine thousand twenty-one. Ordinary maintenance, four hundred and forty-nine thousand eighty. Capital outlay, fifty thousand, for a total of two million ninety-eight thousand one hundred and one, and I so moved.
Second.
Moving in seconded, any discussion? All right, Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Uh, Ken Coster had his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On the previous motion.
What I do?
No, I can speak after.
All right. Uh, yes. Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LaBlanc, yes. Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed. Kenny, you have something to say?
Yeah, I just, uh, Council Cox is doing great, and I agree. Um, I hope this snow and ice, uh, there is enough funding, um, for it. And I also just, so as you're going through all the categories, I just wanted to give a little bit of an explanation. So personal services, that's, we're talking about salaries and wages, uh, overtime for the department, longevity, so salary types, uh, of account payroll. And ordinary maintenance, we're talking about vendors, we're talking about supplies and services. Uh, architectural type of, um, services. Capital outlay, we're talking about equipment, vehicles. So, um, I just wanted to give, you know, the, the council, just a little bit background of each category that, um, that you're voting. And also to give Council Cox a little bit of a breather as well.
Well planned, Kenny, well planned. Thank you.
We're about halfway through, so that was perfect. And I just want to say it takes longer to do the roll call than it does the motions. So, I, I'm in a good place. I've been able to sip water like every five motions, so it's great.
Good. All right.
All right. Moving on. Uh, budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve the FY twenty-two appropriations for DPW facilities maintenance as follows. Personal services, two million seven hundred thousand three hundred and eighty. Ordinary maintenance, two million nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand two seventeen, for a total of five million six hundred and seventy-nine thousand five ninety-seven, and I so moved.
Second.
All right, moving in second and any discussion? Seeing none, Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LaBlanc, yes. Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve the FY twenty-two appropriations for DPW central services as follows. Personal services, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand nine thirty-six. Ordinary maintenance, eight hundred and sixty-four thousand six hundred and fifty. Capital outlay, seven thousand twenty-five, for a total of one million twenty-nine thousand six eleven, and I so moved.
Second.
All right, moved in second and any council discussion? Seeing none, uh, Councilor, let's see, I'm sorry, my, my grandbaby's leaving, so I'm, I'm flustered right now. Council McCarthy.
Council Memard, yes.
Council Memard, I'm sorry. Uh, Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LaBlanc, yes, and Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed. I had to get my goodbye in real quick for, for him. Sorry, go ahead.
Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend to the city council approve the FY twenty-two appropriations for board of health as follows. Personal services, five hundred and sixty-three thousand eight hundred and twelve. Ordinary maintenance, twenty-nine thousand five ninety-six, for a total of five hundred and ninety, five hundred and ninety-three thousand four hundred and eight, and I so moved.
Second.
Moving second and any discussion? Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council, um, Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LaBlanc, yes, and Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve the FY twenty-two appropriations for the council on aging as follows. Personal services, one hundred and fifty thousand nine fifty-four. Ordinary maintenance, eight thousand one fifty-five, for a total of one hundred and fifty-nine thousand one hundred and nine, and I so moved.
Second.
Moving second and any discussion? Oh, Council Gilman.
Yes, I, I'd just like to declare, um, two sixty-eight A, because I serve on the board as an ex officio member of the city council. Um, and I have no financial gains for this vote.
Thank you, Councilor. Um, roll call, Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LaBlanc, yes. Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve the FY twenty-two appropriations for veterans' benefits as follows. Personal services, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand eight twenty-five. Ordinary maintenance, three hundred and eighty thousand three ninety-three, for a total of five hundred and twenty thousand two eighteen, and I so moved.
Second.
Moving in second and any discussion? Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LaBlanc, yes. Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Ball, uh, motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend to approve the FY twenty-two appropriations for tourism commission as follows. Personal services, twenty thousand eight thirty-eight. Ordinary maintenance, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand five hundred, for a total of one hundred and forty-nine thousand three thirty-eight, and I so moved.
Second.
All right, moving in second and any discussion? Seeing none, Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LaBlanc, yes. Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Uh, the next one is for the library, and I need to declare under Mass General Law Chapter two sixty-eight A that I am a incorporator of the Lyceum Sawyer Free Library, but I have no financial interest, and therefore maybe vote, may vote on the library budget.
And similarly, similarly, I am a incorporator and a past board president, but I have no conflict of interest.
And as I am a, um, incorporator.
Yes, I would also like to declare.
Right, so, uh, Council Cox, Council Memard, Council Pat, and Council Holmgren. Um, I can go, and no financial gain. Thank you, folks.
Shame, shame on the rest of you for not being incorporators.
I have a library card, but I heard I don't even need that anymore, so.
I work in a different library.
I heard you do. All right, um, and, and Val, I heard that you have some fines, uh, you know, quick donation. I don't think anybody has fines anymore.
So this budget will go up once Val pays the fines, right?
No, it'll go down.
Oh, that's right.
Just joking. All right. Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve the FY twenty-two appropriations for library administration as follows. Personal services, nine hundred and ninety-five thousand ninety-three. Ordinary maintenance, one hundred and ninety-five thousand six twenty-three, for a total of one million one hundred and ninety thousand seven sixteen, and I so moved.
Second.
All right, moving in second and any discussion?
I, I would like to add, though, since we're plugging the library, that you can be a friend of the library and, and a incorporator, and a friend of the library. It gets like twenty-five dollars a year, and they do some amazing stuff with it, so become a friend of the library.
Yes, I agree. All right, any other council discussion? All right, Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LaBlanc, yes. Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
All right. Budget and finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve the FY twenty-two appropriations for debt service as follows. Ordinary maintenance, ten million five hundred and forty-eight thousand seven eighty-one, for a total of the same, and I so moved.
Second.
All right, moved in seconded, any discussion? All right, Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Councilor LeBlanc, yes, Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council approve the FY twenty-two appropriations for other state and county assessments as follows. Ordinary Maintenance, two million two hundred ninety-seven thousand six seventy-eight, for a total of the same, and I so move.
Second.
Any discussion? Saying none, Council Memhard.
Yes.
Councilor Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Councilor Cox.
Yes.
Councilor Gilman.
Yes.
Councilor Holmgren.
Yes.
Councilor LeBlanc, yes, Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend City Council approve the FY twenty-two appropriations for health and life insurance as follows. Personal Services, eight million seven hundred fifty thousand six fifty-nine, for a total of the same, and I so move.
Second.
All right, moving to second and any discussion? Saying none, Council Memhard.
Yes.
Councilor Nolan.
Yes, and the winds are picking up in my the woods.
That's all right, Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Councilor Pat.
Yes.
Council Cox.
Yes.
Councilor Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LeBlanc, yes, and Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and Finance recommended City Council approve. I'm gonna take, start that over. Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the City Council approve the FY twenty-two appropriations for Medicare insurance as follows. Personal Services, seven hundred ninety thousand for a total of the same, and I so move.
Second.
Moving to second and any discussion? All right, Council Memhard.
Yes.
Councilor Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LeBlanc, yes, Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the City Council approve the FY twenty-two appropriations for workers' compensation as follows. Personal Services, three hundred thirty thousand and, for a total of the same.
Second. Second.
Moving to second and any discussion? All right, Council Memhard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LeBlanc, yes, Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the City Council approve the FY twenty-two appropriations for unemployment compensation. Personal Services, fifty thousand, for a total of the same, and I so move.
Second.
Moving to second and any discussion? Saying none, Council Memhard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LeBlanc, yes, Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the City Council approve the FY twenty-two appropriations for pension regular contributory as follows. Personal Services, ten million three hundred sixty-five thousand three hundred, for a total of the same, and I so move.
Second.
Moving to second and any discussion? Saying none, Council Memhard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LeBlanc, yes, and Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Uh, the next motion is for the regional school assessments. Budget and Finance recommend voted unanimously to recommend the City Council approve the FY twenty-two appropriate appropriation for regional school assessment for the North Shore Regional Vocational School as follows. Ordinary Maintenance, one million six hundred twenty-seven thousand one seventy-nine, for a total of the same, and I so move.
Second.
Moving to second and any discussion, Council Gilman.
I need to declare two sixty-eight A. Because I serve as the Gloucester representative on the school committee, but I have no financial gain, and so I should be able to participate in this vote, thank you.
Yes, you can, thank you. Um, any other? Council Memhard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LeBlanc, yes, Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council approve the FY twenty-two appropriations for liability insurance as follows. Ordinary Maintenance, seven hundred thousand, for a total of the same, and I so move.
Second.
All right, moving to second and any discussion? All right, Council Memhard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LeBlanc, yes, and Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Sorry. Um, all right. Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the City Council approve the FY twenty-two other financing uses as follows. Transfer to other funds, one hundred five thousand, for a total of the same. And I so move.
Second.
All right, moving to second and any discussion?
Um, I just wanna let you know what this, this is comp- comprised of. It's two items, seventy-five thousand dollars for the athletic revolving fund and thirty thousand dollars for the FY twenty-six certification of real and personal property.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other council discussion? Saying none, Council McG- um, Memhard.
Yes.
Councilor Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LeBlanc, yes, Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
The, the next motion is for the school department.
All right, so before we do the school department, uh, my wife is a, uh, teacher's aide over at Plum Cove School, so she works in the school department, uh, under two sixty-eight A. Uh, this has no financial gain for her or my family, and I will be, be voting on this this evening.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that City Council approve the FY twenty-two school department budget in the amount of forty-five million six hundred thirty-eight thousand eight ninety-seven, and I so move.
Second.
Moving to second and any other council discussion? Saying none, um, Councilor Memhard.
Yes.
Councilor Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Council LeBlanc, yes, motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the City Council approve the FY twenty-two general fund revenue, including other financing sources in the amount of one hundred twenty million five hundred thirty-two thousand seven thirty-three, and I so move.
Second.
Moving to seconded, any council discussion? All right, saying none, Council Memhard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LeBlanc, yes, and Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that City Council approve the FY twenty-two overlay reserved for abatements and exemptions in the amount of four hundred thousand, and I so move.
Second.
Moving to second and any discussion? Saying none, Council Memhard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LeBlanc, yes, and Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
After those votes, the total net available net funds for FY twenty-two are one hundred twenty million one thirty-two seven thirty-three. Just for anybody's random bits of wisdom, okay? Um, Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council approve the special, the Community Preservation Fund FY twenty-two revenues in the amount of seven hundred sixty thousand, and I so move.
Second.
Moving to second and any discussion? Saying none, Council Memhard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LeBlanc, yes, Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the City Council approve the Community Preservation Fund FY twenty-two expenditures in the amount of seven hundred sixty thousand as follows. Open space reserve, seventy-six thousand. Community housing reserve, seventy-six thousand. Historic preservation reserve, zero. Administration, thirty-eight thousand. Debt service historic preservation, one hundred ninety-eight thousand five seventy-five. General reserve, three hundred seventy-one thousand four twenty-five, for a total of seven hundred sixty thousand, and I so move.
Second.
All right, moving to second and any discussion? Council Memhard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
We gotta speed up your wifi downtown, Barry. Council Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LeBlanc, yes, and Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes on a roll call, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Uh, the motions following are the water enterprise appropriations. Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the City Council approve the FY twenty-two water enterprise appropriation as follows. Personal Services, one million eight hundred and three thousand seven forty. Ordinary Maintenance, three, three million seventy-seven thousand three thirty. Capital Outlay, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand four twenty-one. Debt Service OFU, two million two hundred two thousand seven hundred four, for a total of seven million three hundred twenty-three thousand one ninety-five, and I so move.
Second.
Moving to seconded, any council discussion? Saying none, Council Memhard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat. Thank you, Barry, Council Cox.
Yes.
Council, uh, Gilman. You're on your bell.
Sorry, yes.
That's okay, uh, Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LeBlanc, yes, and Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes on a roll call, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the City Council approve the FY twenty-two water enterprise revenues as follows. Total revenue, seven million three hundred twenty-three thousand one ninety-five, and I so move.
Second.
All right, moving to second and any discussion? Saying none, Council Memhard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat. Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LeBlanc, yes, Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you, Barry. Uh, Council Cox, go ahead.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the City Council approve the FY twenty-two water rate of nine dollars and thirty-six cents per thousand gallons for a twelve-month billing period effective July one, twenty twenty-one, retroactive to April first, twenty twenty-one, and I so move.
Second.
All right, moving to second and any discussion? Council Cox.
This is a thirty-eight cents or four point two pers- four point two-three percent increase over the FY twenty-one water rate of eight dollars and ninety-eight cents per thousand gallon. Um, again, it's thirty-eight cents more than the, uh, rate from last year.
Thank you for the clarification. Any other council discussion? All right, saying none, Councilor Memhard.
Yes.
Councilor Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Yes.
Council Pat, Council Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LeBlanc, yes, Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed, and I'm glad we can have fun with this, because this is a serious thing, and it's nice to just to like have a little laugh in, in between, so thank you, Barry, we appreciate it. Go ahead, Councilor.
The next set of motions are all for the sewer enterprise appropriations. Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the City Council approve the FY twenty-two sewer enterprise appropriations as follows. Personal Services, one million seven hundred seventy-five thousand eighty-four. Ordinary Maintenance, four million seven hundred five thousand six twenty-seven. Capital Outlay, two hundred fifty-nine thousand four twenty-one. Debt Service OFU, two million five hundred sixty-nine thousand five ninety-five, for a total appropriation of nine million three hundred and nine thousand seven twenty-seven, and I so move.
Second.
Moving to seconded, any discussion? All right, saying none, Council Memhard.
Yes.
Councilor Nolan.
I'm just gonna take a little bit on this vote to see if it's really time delayed, or if Council Pat is on cue. Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
There you go, Council Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LeBlanc, yes, and Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the City Council approve the FY twenty-two sewer enterprise revenue as follows. Total revenues, nine million three hundred and nine thousand seven twenty-seven, for, um, for a total of the same, and I so move.
Second.
Moving to seconded, any discussion? Saying none, Council Memhard.
Yes.
Council Nolan, uh, Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council.
Yes.
There you go. Council Pat. Very well.
Yes, yes, yes.
There you go. Council Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Councilor Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LeBlanc, yes, and Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the City Council approve the FY twenty-two sewer rate of sixteen dollars and sixteen cents per thousand gallon for a twelve-month billing period effective July one, twenty twenty-one, retroactive to April first, twenty twenty-one, and I so move.
Second.
Moving to seconded, any discussion? Go ahead.
This is an eighty-five cent or five point five-five percent increase over the FY twenty-one sewer rate of fifteen dollars and thirty-one cents per thousand gallon. I'm sure all of you are aware of how the, the sewer rate and the water rate go hand in hand. Um, if you use the water at your sink, um, it's, it's equal to, the, the water outgoing is equal to the sewer. Um, so if you use your hose to water your plants outside, um, this is also the same method. I highly encourage people to get rain barrels and use their gutters and use our natural resources to try to keep your bills down in order to, um, avoid that, um, that water, because we know it doesn't go back into the sewer and get processed. But that is how our system is set up, that's how everybody's system is set up. So, again, if you have gutters, I highly encourage you to get rain barrels. We actually have three on our house, and our water rate, our water bill has gone down over the last three years. So, highly encourage that.
Thank you, Council, we appreciate the clarification. Although, although the water comes out of our tap, it's a lot better for my plants than the wa- my rain barrel, because I had it tested, believe it or not. So, but I do use my rain barrel all the time, but we appreciate the clarification, um, on how that works.
Power, Steve, so I think.
Yeah, I, I get you, no, I understand. Uh, but thanks for the clarification, we appreciate that. Uh, any other council discussion? Seeing one, Council Memhard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Cox.
Yes, I did a deliberate delay, because I didn't want Barry to fill alone downtown.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LeBlanc, yes, and Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Yeah, motion passes on nine in favor, zero opposed, like I said, um, it's glad we, I'm glad we can have a little laugh at this. Um, and this is serious business, but, um, you know, just to get a little chuckle out of each other, I, we, I, I appreciate it, because it, it makes things a little bit more fluid um, and a little less stressful while we pass all this, so thank you, guys, I appreciate the, the fodder. Council Cox.
Uh, the next group are the Talbot Rank Enterprise Appropriations. Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the City Council approve the FY twenty-two Talbot Rank Appropriation as follows. Personal Services, one hundred sixty-one thousand three oh two. Ordinary Maintenance, ninety-three thousand. Capital Outlay, seven thousand. Debt Service OFU, forty-one thousand three thirteen, for a total appropriation of three hundred and two thousand six fifteen, and I so move.
Second.
Moving to seconded, any discussion? Saying none, Council Mem- Memhard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LeBlanc, yes, Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council approve the FY twenty-two Talbot Rank Enterprise Revenue as follows. Total revenue, three hundred and two thousand, six fifteen, and I so moved.
Second.
Moving seconded, any discussion? Saying none, council member.
Yes.
Councilor Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Councilor Cox.
Yes.
Councilor Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LeBlanc, yes, Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
The next group of motions are for the Waterways Enterprise Appropriations. Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the City Council approve the FY twenty-two Waterways Enterprise Appropriation as follows. Personal services, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four nineteen, ordinary maintenance, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four eighty-nine. Capital outlay, thirteen thousand, for a total of five hundred and thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eight, and I so moved.
Second.
Moving in seconded, any discussion? Saying none, council member.
Yes.
Councilor Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Councilor Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Councilor LeBlanc, yes, Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the City Council approve the FY twenty-two Waterways Enterprise Revenues as follows. Total revenues, five hundred and thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eight, and I so moved.
Second.
All right, moving in seconded, any discussion? Saying none, council member.
Yes.
Councilor, uh, Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LeBlanc, yes, Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
The next group of motions are the revolving funds, um, and I would like to share the screen, um, uh, the city clerk's gonna share the. The charts, so I don't have to say each one. Um, can you scroll down a little bit, Joanne?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm trying to. Get it so I can. There we go.
There we go, okay. Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the City Council contin- City Council continue acceptance of statute. Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half. School Department revolving funds for FY twenty-two as specified, as seen on the screen in the first brackets, um, there. And I so moved.
Second.
So is everybody okay with seeing it like this? As opposed to reading them, okay?
Yes.
All right, motion's been made in seconded, any discussion? All right, seeing none, uh, Council Member.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Um, thank you for presenting it this way, and yes.
Council Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LeBlanc, yes, Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
The next motion. Uh, Budget and Finance. Sorry, um, Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the City Council authorize the city to establish revolving funds. For certain city departments under Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half. For the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty-twenty-one, with specific receipts credited to each fund, the purpose of, for which. Each fund may be sent spent in the maximum amount that that may be spent from each fund for the fiscal year as specified. Um, so as you can see on screen, that is the the revolving, those are the revolving funds, and I so moved.
Second.
All right, movement seconded, any discussion? Saying none, council member.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LeBlanc, yes, Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the City Council appropriate one million, one hundred and seven, six hundred and fourteen. No, then. Joanne. For the FY twenty-two operating costs of the Gloucester School Food Service Program. And one million, one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six fourteen for the estimated receipts from fees. Charged to users of the service provided by the Gloucester Food Service Program in accordance with Mass General Law. Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E, and I so moved.
Second.
Moving in seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, Council Memhard.
Yes.
Councilor Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes.
Council Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Council Holmgren.
Yes.
Council LeBlanc, yes, and Council McCarthy.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
Great, thank you so, Joanne, I appreciate your help on that. Um, that was the the last motion, um, I have a few closing remarks, if I may.
Proceed.
The FY twenty-two budget for the general fund CPA and for enterprise funds total approximately one hundred and thirty-eight million dollars. That's a modest increase of approximately two point nine million and a two point one-four percent from the fiscal year twenty-one budget. Which reflects mainly our increase, increasing fixed costs such as pension obligations and healthcare costs. Through the efforts of the administration and support of the cou- City Council, the city has adopted a capital plan. Funding and free cash distribution policy that sets aside forty percent of free cash to the stabilization. Fund and twenty percent to the building maintenance stabilization fund. There's approximately four point one million in the capital project stabilization fund. That is available to fund capital items in FY twenty-two. There's also approximately two point three million in the building stabilization ma- building maintenance stabilization fund that is available to fund. Building maintenance items in FY twenty-two. There's also approximately six and a half million in the general stabilization fund set aside for rainy days. These stabilization funds are great insurance policy for an emergency. The budget represents a considerable effort on the part of the council, the administration. The school committee and the auditor's office to bring value out of every taxpayer's dollar. I commend all of those who participated in this process for their long hours, careful attention to detail. And I would like to especially thank the city clerk, Joanne Cinos, city auditor Kenny Costa. And Sherry Carvalis, our new clerk of committees, who shared this long journey and provided us with support. I would like to note that this is Sherry's first year as the clerk of committee and with the Budget and Finance team. And we would really like to applaud applaud her eagerness to jump right in. And her ability to help us navigate the process like a champ. Her efforts are greatly appreciated by myself and the other committee members, so I, this is her first year. Again, I, we get help from a lot of different people, but I, this being her first budget. Um, I offered to change the motions and do the motion template in the beginning, and she told. Joanne that she wanted to do it because she really wanted to get, dig in and and do it and be familiar with it, so. I really, I mean, she's done amazing job, so I really appreciate her her help.
Awesome, well said, Councilor. Um, so before we, Kenny, would you like to say anything?
I just wanna say, uh, great work by everybody, administration, budget and finance, the City Council. Um, I'm just glad that the process uh, is now done, is complete. And uh, now we just need to clean up fiscal year twenty-one, as you know, we have some snow and ice deficits. So you'll be seeing some uh, special budgetary transfers, uh, perhaps in the next month to uh, deal with fiscal year twenty-one. So I just wanna thank everybody, um, and as Council Cox mentioned, Sherry, uh, she stepped in her first year and uh, she did uh, great, so. Uh, great teamwork by all, thank you.
Thank you, Kenny. Uh, Mayor, would you like to say anything?
Yes, please, first of all, I wanna thank the Budget and Finance, it hasn't been easy, in the past, let's not have been say this year, the past couple of years. Um, this council, we've actually, as a city, we have done very well. There are still some cities, towns, um, that haven't even done their last year budget, and they're not going to be able to um. Finish this year's budget, and they're waiting for a certain assistance. We are ahead of the ballgame, but it doesn't mean we are safe and it's done, it means that we were proactive, uh, we did what we needed to do. And this council also helped me continue so for the year twenty-twenty-two. It's passed, thank you very much for everyone's hard work, and all to my uh, managers for understanding that, you know, some things had to be cut and some things had to be just. Status quo. That um, CARES Act and API money, API money, we use within two years, CARES Act is like a one-time. We cannot use one-time money or uh, the API money for things that need um, constant um. Repeat work and salaries and and it raises or anything else, so it's kinda hard and difficult and I understand that. So I wanna thank everyone because it's not easy, and you know, when we said to everyone, you need to do this and you have to have status quo and please and the two percent. It's difficult because, you know, things have increased, just like everyone's water bills, just like everything else, and and the cost of living and everything else that's happening around the communities. But we're doing it, Gloucester's doing it, Gloucester has been proactive, we're working on streets, you know, I know, um, a lot of you getting the complaints, how many streets you have to work at one time? Take it, take it, because you know what, we're very lucky, and so again, thank you all to the councils and thank you Budget and Finance, it's not easy, it was very difficult. Because you understand what everyone's asking for, and you had to be the one to say no, yes, uh, not just us, so. Thank you, Council Cox, thank you all of you, and have a good night, and thank you, well done, everyone.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, before I ask councilors, um, I'm gonna speak real quick. Um, this is my last budget, and um, I wanna thank the administration. Um, this administration and the last administration. For ten great years of me being on the council, I've learned a tremendous amount through this process. Um, Kenny, you are a complete rock star. Um, I appreciate not only your guidance and your leadership, but also your friendship, um, your phone calls and the um. The, the conversations that we have, um. Through the city and outside of city stuff, talking about family and and yucking it up, um, so I really appreciate that. I wanna um, give a huge shout out to the Budget and Finance Committee, um, Council Memhard. Council McCarthy, and especially Council Cox. Um, for her steady hand and her leadership over the past several years as Budget and Finance Chair. Um, she has gone above and beyond to make sure that every line item is accounted for, and um, as you can see this evening. That she was well-versed in explaining, um, the little ins and outs, that some, not 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 the council, but some of the attendees that may wanna watch this. And the constituents, um, will have this to fall back on and and understand what we did this evening, so. Melissa, you are a tremendous asset to this. Um, not only the co- community, but this council and this budget, um, in the past several budgets, so we appreciate your leadership. And um, John, same here, um, same thing as Kenny, I appreciate being able to lean on you. Um, not only myself, but I'm sure the rest of the council, I can speak for that. Anytime that we need you, you are there, you are a rock star, whether it's a special meeting for the budget. Um, whether it's a meeting for the school, whether it's just a regular city council meeting. Um, you're a rock star buddy, and I appreciate everything, uh, not only that you have done for the city, but that you have done for me, and you have. Taught me um, a tremendous amount over the past ten years, um. I'm not gonna miss the budget, I'm gonna be honest with you, I'm gonna miss everything else. Uh, but like I said earlier, it was fun to yuck it up a little bit during this very serious process. And to have a little laugh in between and uh, kinda poke at each other, so it makes it a lot easier for all of us. Um, and before I turn it over to the council, Mayor has her hand up one more time.
Thank you, I am sorry I remiss that, you know, behind every good mayor, there's a staff. And um, behind that staff is a great city council, all of you. But I would be remiss if I didn't thank John Dunn myself, I I think we drove him crazy that he actually bought a little small convertible, just to get his hair. All in the wind, so he didn't have to take it out, but really, John, you're right, uh, we've could have done it, you know. People say, well, you know, you're gonna be able to know the budget, you're gonna be able to do this, and you'll be able to do that, well, you know, we have a great team, we have great management, we have. You know, Kenny ripping apart every little thing, what an auditor, I mean, Melissa and Kenny had a a a great hands-on for years, and I've been working with um. Kenny, and I can't even tell you so many things and so much information, and it's fantastic, and I wanna thank um. Uh, Chris and Frank for coming along, and Frank, thank you so much, um, it's been uh, really great, and you know, he's been taking a lot of the brunt from me. But you know what, inside my office, everyone, who gets all the calls, who gets everything else, I really have to say this time, I have to thank Enza. There's times that she hasn't taken a day off, hasn't even gone out, so all of us really, I mean, I'm telling you, I'm on meetings with mayors. Um, and I'm proud of my Budget and Finance, I'm also proud of everyone because, including all my managers and my employees, because you know what? I'm telling you, contracts are coming, everything else, including the school side, we've never worked this close together, all of us. You know, and 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 I'm not gonna talk about anything else, but as far as budget-wise, as far as making sure that, you know, every citizen. Um, gets what they need, especially our students, it was a scary year, we all know that, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and uh, also Frank, we appreciate you stepping in, and Chris, um, during these tough times, um. You know, in a split second, you were willing to jump in and with both feet and and help us out, and uh, also Chairman Pope is on the call. Um, you crushed it on the school side, we appreciate everything you guys do too on that side. Um, with that being said, Council Cox, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I just, I I forgot, um, and my apologies, Council Gilman. Uh, Council Gilman sat in with Budget and Finance for the first couple meetings, um, because uh, Council Memhard was not able to attend. So I really wanna say that I appreciate you being there, uh, you provided a lot of good information during the meetings, and. Um, it was nice to have you present during that, so I appreciate you filling in, um, when you could. And I appreciate anybody that actually came to some of the meetings and sat through our long sessions with the department heads. Um, it's, it's not always uh, fun, but I highly recommend that any new counselor that comes in. Gets put on Budget Finance, it is a tremendous asset in working with the city. Um, it's a tremendous way to meet all the department heads, um, when you're cutting their budget, I'm just joking. Uh, you know, actually, so, um, but it is, the Budget and Finance, um, committee, I think, is the most important budget. Or most important committee because of the fact that you get to meet each of the department heads, you really get um. Your hands dirty with the finances of the city, and you get to see where the money comes from and goes, so it's, it's a tremendous committee. Most people think it's boring, just numbers, but it it's good, we try to have fun on Budget Finance, so. Again, thank you Gilman, Council Gilman for filling in for Council Memhard, and um, for everybody that attended, so, thank you.
Thank you, Melissa, Council Gilman.
Yeah, I ju- I just wanted to comment, um, I have a strong appreciation for the work of BNF and um, the organization. Of having these meetings, uh, Council Cox chair, um, Council Member, Vice Chair. Council McCarthy, always prepared, um, really on your game, and I really liked how you all worked together on the solution at yesterday's meeting. With the administration, and that just felt really good as a citizen, as a taxpayer, um, just sitting in and listening to that conversation. So kudos to all, um, I don't need to repeat all the kudos to um, administration, because everyone has said all the things I would say. But um, thank you so much to to everybody, appreciate it.
Thank you, Belle, anybody else, Council Member?
I'm good, thank you all.
Council Pat.
Yes, I'd just like to um, thank um, Councilor Cox for her leadership here on uh, BNF. Um. Not being a newbie, uh, there's a lot that I don't know, et cetera, don't know how it works, et cetera. And being able to watch and see what she has done, along with, you know, Councilor Memhard and uh, Council McCarthy. Um, and obviously working with uh, John Dunn and uh, Kenny Costa and the rest of the administration. Um, has taught me a lot, and I just really respect um, Council Cox and thank her for all her hard work, and. I know that those in our, uh, the City Council Office, Joanne and Sherry and um, uh, Grace, et cetera, also. Uh, have worked very hard, but I wanted to give it that special shout out to uh, to Melissa and uh, and her crew.
Sherry, you're gonna make me cry.
Thank you, Barry, well said, anybody else?
Well done.
Council Nolan.
Yeah, so, I look at the whole picture here, um, Budget and Finance did an unbelievable job, Melissa's always been on her game with that, that's where she feels best with the numbers, she's just excellent with it, but. I don't wanna get into a Forrest Gump type thing, but life is like a box of Legos. And when you go by the instructions and you put things together, there's no leftover pieces, and they all fit well. And I think this budget with all of the procedures and all of the people involved, um, this Lego. Project is complete, and I wanna thank you all, from administration to to department heads and council, wonderful job, thank you.
Thank you, Sean, I saw, I thought you were gonna say, when you drop one on the floor and you step on it, hurts like hell, but.
It's also like putting a truck crap back together.
I'd like to know that we built a pirate ship with our Legos.
There you go. Are, anybody else? All right, seeing none, uh, Joanne, is there anything else we need to do before we wrap this up?
No, just a motion to adjourn.
All right.
Vote adjourn.
Second.
So, uh, it's gotta be moved for us, it's, mo- motion's been made by Councilor Cox, uh, second. Uh, Sean, Council Nolan moved it, Council Memhard seconded, and uh, roll call, Council Memhard.
Yes, good night.
Councilor Nolan.
Yes, good night.
O'Hara.
Yes.
Council Pat.
Yes, good night.
Councilor Cox.
Yes.
Council Gilman.
Yes.
Councilor Holmgren.
Yes, thank you all very much.
Council LeBlanc, yes, Council McCarthy.
Yes, and good night, everybody.
All right, good night, everyone, good job, we are adjourned.
Thank you.